All right, in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10 4-6 PL 1975 C 231 S 1 amended 2006 C 70 S 2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of time, date, location, and to the extent known the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press, the new coaster, and on April 1st, 2021 via email. Copies of this notice have been placed in the administration building bulletin board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park, filed with the city clerk on April 1st, 2021. The mission of the Asbury Park School District is to provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skill and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Roll call please, Mr. Hastings.
Thank you, Madam President. As I take roll, please unmute yourself, pause for a second, and then remute. Thank you. Vasquez Anderson? Ms. Breach?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Grillo?
Here.
Mr. Lauteraka?
Here.
Mr. Remy? Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Ms. Lizinski?
Here.
Ms. Etienne?
Here.
All right, may we stand for the flag? Well, flag's a little, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Like, am I the only one saying the pledge of allegiance? Okay, I'm sorry. With liberty and justice for all. The public participation part, we have three minutes. You can come to the mic and you can state your name and your address. And if you have any questions or comments, please use this time to do that now.
Ms. Etienne, we talked about perhaps doing the presentation first and then doing public as there'll be questions, I'm assuming, after the presentation, if that's the board's pleasure.
That makes sense to me. Is everybody in grants? Okay.
Madam Board President, before we start that, though, I just wanted to to discuss the email that I sent out at the end of last month about changing my vote for accepting the resignation of the CSA. According to the rules, I have to present it during the next meeting in order for it to be just accepted by the board. And technically, this is the next meeting. So my email stated that I wanted to change my vote, my no vote to a yes, I'm sorry, my yes vote to a no vote in accepting the CSA's resignation.
Okay, Adam, can you speak on that just really quickly and then we can get that done?
Absolutely. So a member of the board has the right to change his or her vote up to the time of the vote is finally announced. After that, meaning if the meeting ends and then there's another meeting or after that meeting ends, the board member can make the change only by the permission of the Assembly or the remaining board members, which may be given by general consent. That is, by no members objecting when the chair, meaning you, Madam President, inquires if anyone objects. If an objection is made, then a motion may be made to grant permission, and that motion is undebatable. So that's per Roberts Rules of Order. So at this point, Madam President, if you want to ask the board members if anyone objects to Mr. Grillo changing his vote from a yes to a no, if we don't have any objections, then Mr. Hastings will note the record. If we do have an objection, then we will deal with it by way of a motion.
Okay. At this point, does anyone object to Joe changing his vote from last month?
No.
I don't.
I don't.
Okay, so seeing that there are no objections to the change, Mr. Hastings, if you would note the minutes and also, well, tonight, you're not approving minutes from the last board meeting, but the minutes from the last board meeting should also kind of contain an asterisk and a footnote so that it is memorialized that at the next meeting, Mr. Grillo did change his vote. And then the minutes from this meeting will also reflect the same and be consistent.
Now, Mr. Grillo, would you like to elaborate on why you changed a little bit? Or is it that you didn't know that you could vote no or yes?
Yeah, I mean, it was a little bit of both. I feel that, you know, because the resignation was kind of an add-on to the agenda last month. And, you know, I think most of us were kind of surprised and shocked by it. You know, having to accept someone's resignation is always a little tricky and it kind of felt like we had to say yes in a weird way. So, but then afterwards, and thinking about it, I realized that, for what it's worth, and I get it that, you know, at the end of the day, it's, you know, it is what it is. I just felt more comfortable after thinking about it and deliberating it that I wanted to change my vote to no. I feel that the CSA has has a lot of value in the community, in the school. And even if she wants to resign, I don't want her to resign.
I respect your opinion.
Thanks.
Okay, so now we can move forward with the town hall. Mr. Lauteraka, would you like to take over?
Thank you, Madam President. Jeff, we can put up the PowerPoint and then I'll kind of move from slide to slide. I was asked by board leadership to put together a presentation that presented to the community. Hopefully, as we were just mentioning, this could be recorded and posted and we can drive others to this presentation after the fact. As I go through it, try to go slowly if any board member seeks to interject or comment, feel free. Anyone wants to certainly make a correction if I misstate something, appreciate that. Even though we, as a board, our typical board meetings have presented information about the budget. We did our tentative budget meeting, and we will be presenting the budget for approval at our upcoming meeting. In the board, it felt like there have been misperceptions in the community. There have been misstatements, both the community and the press with either outdated or incorrect information. And we felt that this additional short presentation could make a few points about where we are as a district, where this administration and this board has come from, and where we are moving forward. So with that, point out, there are members of the board, our emails are at the website so any community member can contact us individually and can begin talking about the budget. There are, as we put together the budget, in effect, three components, or if you will, we're referring to as three buckets. State aid, funding from the state, which the state sets by formula, a local contribution, also identified by state formula to what the locality should be contributing. And that local fair share derived primarily from, solely currently, from property taxes. And then third, we look to the district and we review the district budget as to any operational savings or efficiencies in order to get the number that's been established as the the total budget that we have to go into the next year with. So let's start with that first bucket, Jeff. State aid. Many of you might be aware, certainly all of the board is aware of the S 2 bill, which became law, that affected what's referred to as adjustment aid from the state that comes to the district. And based on that S 2 bill and some enrollment decline in Asbury, you see, starting in the year 2018, the reduction of state aid that Asbury Park School District is receiving. The amount of state aid was in effect frozen as to the conditions that existed in 2008. What the S 2 bill did was say, we're going to now get budgets among all the various school districts up to date in terms of the conditions that exist now. So that with both enrollment and resources available, what your state aid should be. So you see the S 2 reductions going through year 2025 and totaling, currently as our estimate, a loss of funding of $28 million to the school district. And we can show that again on the next graph, just a different a different way from where total state aid was in 2013 and where we anticipate it to be in 2025. So the first bucket is substantially leaking, and that's been the challenge for this administration and this board since 2018 as we set the budget each year. Let's move on to the second bucket. Local fair share. This amount, you see from the slide, is also set by a state formula. It primarily focuses on real property values in the locality and residents' income in the locality. The state formula for Asbury Park was based on those factors in 2008 right up until 2018. That's, again, the impact of the S 2 bill. Next slide. So as 2018, we were faced with, we should have a local fair share of over $17 million. That's what the locality should be contributing to the education of our children according to state formula. That's what the state is essentially requiring. Yet in 2018, things had been frozen for at least a decade. The actual fair share was just over $7 million. Therefore, as a district, we were below 42% of the state required amount for the local fair share. So keep in mind, this is one major point we wanted to make. The need to increase what the locality pays is not due to inefficiencies. We don't even get yet to what our budget is, but because state adjustment aid, state subsidies existed for years while Asbury Park resources grew. And as they grew, Asbury Park was not paying an additional local fair share. Where have we come? We can look at that next slide. You can see, since 2018, we've made a commitment for Asbury Park to move toward paying its required amount of local fair share toward the education of its children. Another way of looking at how taxes with regard to education have remained comparatively low, we can go to the next slide. The average in Monmouth County, 54% of your total tax bill would go toward education. Based on 2019 numbers, we in Asbury Park have 27% of our total tax bill going toward education. And again, keeping these numbers in mind, this illustrates another fallacy that somehow, with regard to Asbury paying its local fair share, I've heard misstatements in the community that residents' tax bills were going to double as a result. Well, you can see that no way is that possible based on these kinds of numbers. So where are we now as we look to the community and say, what is our 2021, 2022 budget going to be with regard to the local fair share? And we're presenting a budget that shows we are just under 60% now of the state required amount. State is saying, in light of where Asbury resources are, we should be at over $22 million. And this budget, we will pay just under 13. Again, to compare, if we look at other Monmouth County K through 12 school districts and what they pay as a local fair share based on what the state requires, we can only get information countywide for 2018, 2019. But that information shows there are 11 K through 12 districts paying more than 100% of their local fair share in terms of how they value what's needed for the education of their children. And all but one is over 80%. And then you see some examples. Neighboring Ocean is at 98.5% of its required amount. Neptune, Wall, and Long Branch in the 80%. And again, for our budget this year, we are proposing, we're coming in close to 60% of the required amount. What does that mean to the taxpayer? And here's the proposed tax impact. You can see it. We've highlighted it. You may, as a community member, you may have to look at your assessed value in looking at my tax bill. And I think I can, not an expert, but I can generalize that assessed value is less than maybe what you could sell your property for today. But if you look at your assessed value, the average assessed value will over $400,000. And what that would do, that would be an annual increase, $323 in taxes for almost $27 per month. With that, we can move to the third bucket. The district contribution. So as we move in local share, trying to get to our state required amount, we're also, because of the significant reductions we're getting in state adjustment aid, we have to reduce the budget. And this year, the budget's been reduced by over $4 million by district administration. And then you see a number of factors that have gone into that and reduction of positions through attrition for this coming year that's been going on. Shifting expenses we had to outside experts or organizations for instructional programs, bringing those in-house, having our staff and teachers become the experts on many of the programs that we've initiated. Making, being aware, we're in a situation where we need to save throughout the year and beyond. There's been operational savings throughout the year so that those can be rolled over to the next year. And we have begun with repurposing Barack Obama School Building, facility consolidation, which brings about savings in a number of ways, savings in maintenance of those facilities. And as we go more green in terms of utilities, we're experiencing savings there as well. With that kind of cut, you'll see in our notice with regard to the budget, what we've published. I know it's been in the coaster. A proposed per pupil cost, $27,977. To give you a comparison, again, on the website, the information was most recent was 2019 and 2020. However, I just picked up my coaster today and I did find the notices for Ocean Township is now at $21,800 per student. Neptune is now, for this year, proposing $20,328. By my rough calculations and estimates, if you think back to that second slide we showed and the additional $10 million that's going to be cut from the budget as we lose state adjustment aid in a matter of two to three years, Asbury Park's proposed per pupil cost will be right in line with those neighboring districts we have of Ocean and Neptune. So again, there's another fallacy I've seen in the press. I've heard that somehow the Asbury Park School District is wasting taxpayer money at a rate of $42,000 per pupil. That information is outdated. It's incorrect. And it's misleading because it uses the wrong metric. That we'll get to in just a second. But here are the numbers. Here's where you can see in light of state and local taxes under the state formulas, what our per pupil cost is anticipated to be and what we've put out to the public for the 2021, 22 school year at $27,977. The next slide points out there is additional funds that a school district could apply for or may be entitled to from either the federal government, other kinds of state pots of money, private foundations. And the district has aggressively sought that kind of funding, over $25 million for the upcoming school year. When you look at that kind of funding, though, it's earmarked. It's narrow in its focus and purpose. It can only be used for certain things. The rules set out by the organization providing the funding. But those are critical things and benefits that this district brings that not every district does. We have separate academies in the high school, in engineering, healthcare, law enforcement. We have an academic, recreational, after-school, and summer enrichment programs. We obtain money under the Every Student Succeeds Act to improve instruction, provide professional development, support English language learners, and of course, COVID relief is included in there. We obtain funding for individuals with disabilities. That funding is critical. You're going to be a district that goes above and beyond in terms of serving its students. And at times, numbers from this category have been taken by the press to somehow create the misconception that Asbury Park is wasting taxpayer money. So I'm going to stop here. I would open it first to my other board members if there's anything else they'd like to add or point out. Any additional factors, but I'd also like to thank Jeff and Ivy for all their help in putting together the presentation. And felt like there were a few points to make here to clear up the record as to how Asbury has been successfully meeting the challenge of significant state aid reductions since 2018. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lauteraka. This is a, it was a well-presented, well, the information there was accurate and recent. And I think it was really well laid out and very concise and clear in the intent in the information that was delivered. Are there any additional comments from the board members before we open it up to our participants that are waiting if they have any questions?
Hi, this is Joe. Dominic, great job on this. This really laid out exactly what we've been saying for a very, very long time. My only suggestion and comment is that we make sure that we get that number of $27,000 and change cost per student out into the community, out into the press. I don't know if the press is even on this town hall meeting, but you know, the Asbury Park Press and other places are so quick to, you know, to do negative headlines on Asbury Park and our kids and our schools. Let's see if they'll actually, you know, put out the correct number for once of what it costs our students and that it's not of what it costs our students, and that it's not that far off from what other neighboring towns, um, are at. Um, so that's, that's my only comment, to really get it out there to the community and out in, into the press. So thanks. Thanks again, Dominic. Great job.
I think that's Miss Breach, uh.
Can you try again, Connie? We didn't hear you. Okay, anyone else?
I'd just like to say something. This is, uh, Barbara Lusinski. Um, I think that everybody also needs to know that this formula for schools is based on an average. So it doesn't take into account each individual school district's needs to the, to the, like, the dollar. Um, and you'll notice that the urban districts are all underfunded by taxpayer dollars. So I think that's something that, you know, people need to look at when they're talking, when they're talking about budgeting and financing and taxes, that we are not unusual in our situation right now.
Thank you, Barbara. Does anyone else have any comments before we open up to, um?
I think Miss Breach wants to, uh, comment about getting, uh, more, more of a share from the state, and that's important because increased enrollment will increase state aid. So for everybody in the community that, you know, is thinking about where to send their preschoolers or their kindergarteners, they need to really concentrate on sending them to the public school district, which is, which is fine, you know, stop, stop looking at all the social media and all the naysayers because people don't have an accurate perception of what's going on in our school district, and I think that's important.
Thank you. I think what the community could also know is that we have tried, like, um, the administration and the district has sought out other funding, um, sites, but we have also, uh, fought, tried to fight back a little bit, even with the S, um, the S two bill. So we, we've tried to approach this challenge from, um, varying angles. Um, can we open it now to the, uh, public if they have any questions? Or if, are there any callers on the line with any questions? Are there any emails, Mr., um, Hastings?
Yeah, so if we're going to open it to the public at this point, we should just note that, um, we'd ask folks to state their name and address. Uh, they have three minutes for their comment. If you're calling in, you can hit star three on your telephone, and you'll be placed in a queue. And then, uh, when you're unmuted, you'll hear the, the notification on your phone. And we also have publiccomment@asburypark.k12 nj.us. So we'll give it a second to queue up to see if anybody has comments, and, uh, we'll, we'll take it from there. At this time, we have no emails. Mr. Branigan, do we have any attendees wishing to, um, to make comment?
At this time, no one has raised their hand yet.
So we have no questions in the chat, and there's no telephone, um, inquiry.
Okay, if we, we can give it about 30 seconds and see, and then we can, we, we can move forward.
And Madam President, I just have a, a question. Is this presentation, I would imagine this presentation will be put on the district website so that people can view it and, uh, the meeting, so they can catch up just in case they weren't able to attend tonight before next Thursday's meeting.
Madam Superintendent, is that, is that what, uh, is that possible?
To have this, uh, presentation available for later review?
Yes, please.
Yes, that's possible.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question. Is this meeting going to be, um, able to, i- is the entire meeting, the recording going to be on, on the website for folks to, to review? Or if, if we want to send the link out to anyone who asks?
Yes, so on our website, asburypark.k12 nj.us, in the upper right-hand corner of the, the homepage are some social media links, uh, for Instagram, for Facebook, Twitter, and also for YouTube. If you click on the YouTube link right now, all of our meetings, uh, all the video portions, as we're seeing on our screens here, are posted there up until the March 25th meeting, and we'll get a copy of this provided, uh, later tonight from the service, and that could be posted tomorrow.
Thank you, Ms. Hastings. I think we should close public participation now.
Okay, we're closing public participation at 7:49.
Okay, and we don't have, um, I don't think we have anything for exec. So can I get a motion to close the meeting?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Ivy. Thank you, Mr. Lotaraca, for all the work that you did on this presentation.
Fantastic job, definitely.
Stay well, everybody.